Go ahead, Kelly.
Hey, yes, welcome everyone to Monday, December 7th, meeting in caucus of the Albany Common Council. Just for the record, I'll go through, we have council member Flynn, Dochee, Ballerin, Fahey, O'Brien, Farrell, Hoey, council president Ellis, Councilman Conti, Councilman Igo, and that's it, our staff, JR Pachardo, our attorney, Michelle Legislative A, our clerk Danielle Gillespie. We also have the city treasurer, Darius Shawn Far here, court counsel Brett Williams, mayor's chief of staff, David Gallin, and the court counsel, did I see Marisa in here somewhere? Yes, right in the center there. Yes, I'm just trying to see if I forgot anyone. So Ms. Frederick has also joined us and we have Richard Berkeley from the BZA, who's also with us. How you doing, Richard? So what I like to do is just, I need a motion from a member to go into executive session regarding a personnel matter.
I move that we go into executive session for a personal matter.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, so JR, can you take us out?
Hi, Kelly.
Okay, thank you. We're back from executive session. We were discussing the personal matter, back into our regular meeting. It looks like, I think I missed Mr. Igo before and Ms. Love is with us now, as well as Mr. Anani from the council. Okay, jumping, oh, excuse me. And so before heading into the agenda, were we going to have any, Jenny, did we need to have any discussion around that legislation? I don't think we do. I think we can just go down the list, mention them and speak as we go.
I think that's fine.
Probably the better way. Okay, all right. So again, welcome. It's the Monday, December 7th of 2020, meeting of the council, so our caucus prior to our main meeting. Jumping into the agenda approval of meeting minutes from a previous meeting, we have the November 16th, 2020, meeting minutes for approval. Okay. And on to local laws, we skip to local law in of 2020. We'll be voting on that. That's amending and creating a license process for vendors. Passed law, I believe, on the 3rd with positive recommendation. That's local law and we'll be moving that. Okay, on to.
And who has that? Because I'm like, it doesn't say who's, who has that, it's just going to doesn't have a name to it.
It's a.
It's in law, it's by Mr. Igo.
I go on behalf of lawn building.
Yep.
Yep.
So you call on Mr. Igo, sorry about that. Okay, it's ordinances, ordinance is held. We got Mr. Hoey's ten ordinance, it's 23, 10120. Actually, no, let me go back. I'll get back to that one. First, we have Mr. Conti's. It's number six on the agenda, it's 45, 122 of 19, it's an ordinance. It's the ordinance for the snow park, city parks during snow emergencies. It was in law the other night and passed with a positive recommendation. That's number six on the agenda. It's ordinance 45, 12219. Then next on to number 13 was, which is Mr. Hoey's head ordinance, that's 23, 10120. That passed law on 12, 3 also with a positive recommendation, we'll be moving that. Okay, next is agenda item number 14, it's ordinance number 24, 10120. And that's by Mr. Ballerin, Ms. Love, Mr. Robinson. It passed out of HR committee back on the 18th of November. That's 24, 10120, we'll be moving that.
That's with an amendment?
Mr. Ballerin.
See it on here.
Effective day.
Yeah, January 1st.
Okay, so it's going to be amended.
And also Ms. Fred, Ms. Frederick's part of it as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I have that original copy, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think everybody on the committee went on as a co-sponsor.
Correct.
Here's number 14, so next on to resolutions introduced. It's by Mr. Anani, it's Resolution 112, 12120R, calling on the Department of Homeland Security, all the deportation proceedings. You wanted us, you wanted to pass this tonight, right, Mr.?
Yes, thank you.
Anani members in support of this.
All co-sponsors.
Right, okay. Will be passed. Okay, next, by Ms. Farrell, so 113, Resolution 113, 12120R, it's for Mr. Stoller. Again, I believe we were all co-sponsors on that also. Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so next, the Resolution 114, 12120R, I believe we're all, started with Mr. Conti, but I believe we're all co-sponsors in favor of this.
Yes.
It'll be a pass tonight, okay? Next, Resolution 115, 12120R by Ms. Farrell. That will be intro and whole, you're going to discuss that at your upcoming meeting?
Yes, that's going to be, that will go to the finance committee and we'll discuss that at the meeting on the 17th.
Okay, it's going to be referral finance. Okay, next is Resolution 116, 12120R, it's by me for establishing the work, standard workdays. That's, at this point, it'd be for Ms. Frederick because she's new, everyone else's was already done. We had discussion in our caucus about the city auditors needing to be done. We still working on that? Or, or is it going to be for next meeting?
It'll probably be done by the next meeting. We are still working on it.
Okay. All right, thank you. So that'll, that'll be a pass. All right, then on to the MCs. So got a couple MCs, so 117, 12120R by Ms. Farrell. It's establishing the homestead, non-homestead. That's an MC. Again, this is, these are all going to your committee.
I believe we're, no, we're, yeah.
I know Mr. Where is he? Mr. Shawn Farf, that's why we've been.
Yeah, we're, we're past, we need to pass.
Okay, yeah, I actually have pass in my, my. Okay, so that's 117, 12120R, that's an MC. The next one, again, in the finance realm.
So, Mr. Kimbrough, so I think this is the first time we're seeing this particular resolution. There's not going to be any discussion on it at all at this point?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, we can, I'm not rushing this, so yeah, let's, let's discuss it.
I mean, does everybody else understand what this is about and how these figures were arrived at and the language in it? I don't even think that this was discussed at last caucus as being introduced tonight.
We, we did discuss it at the last caucus. Darius was here and discussed it and it was something where we talked about preference to be able to discuss it at the finance committee meeting, but the county is meeting on the 21st as well and they need to have this before they meet.
So Darius. I recall that occurring for discussions on the re-levis and the attachment of, you know, the bids, et cetera. I, I was, as you know, I've been wondering where this is and why it wasn't introduced or given to us by the administration before now. So.
Darius maybe can talk about it a little bit. If this does not need to be passed at tonight, then I would much rather discuss it at, at our committee meeting and.
I don't, I don't want to hold it up, but I do have a couple of questions, you know?
Why don't we start there then, Judy?
All right, so.
That's why he's here, I imagine.
So we are, we are changing the percentages from last year. But the first, whereas says the city of Albany is opted not to amend its differential. So how do we reconcile that?
That actually is, is the administration, that was part of the budget process and those figures essentially provided by the budget office to the council. On that side, I know I can speak more to the re-levis than that, but I'm not sure, I think it's a relatively small change, but I think it was also part of the budget process.
Right, so I'm asking about the first, whereas it says we opted not to amend the differential. I understand where the rates came from because I participated in those meetings, but I'm just asking about the resolution language.
Maybe, maybe Brett might.
Yeah, I think that's the second whereas, but in any event.
Is the second whereas, you're right.
Yeah, that may be in there as a mistake. We could probably delete that if you like. In fact, it would make sense to delete that.
And I, I, if I got this a little sooner, I would have dug out last year's resolution on this. This says that the city of Albany's base year assessment role of 2020 has been determined to be 54.87. So this relates to the resolution, to what the tax levy is going to be for the 2021 tax year. Am I right?
It's the, I think, I'm pretty sure it is referring to the 2020 role because that's what the 2021 tax bills going out in January are based on.
But we're talking about the locally adjusted homestead-based proportion. And the local, this, this particular percentage applies to the tax bills going out. I don't know if somebody can
I'm trying to pull up.
Shoot me last year's resolution.
Yeah.
I mean, that would give me a little bit more comfort level in this. I tried to find it in amongst my documents from last year. But I wasn't able to do that quickly.
Bear with me a few minutes and I should be able to send it to your councilman.
You having the re-levis? While Brett's searching?
I'm okay moving to the re-levis.
Okay. I mean, they, you know, they're essentially as presented, I sent the list of the DGS re-levis, the demo re-levis and the water re-levis, the backup documentation on Saturday. It's slightly amended today as we worked our way through it over the weekend. But the numbers in the resolution are as, you know, essentially as presented. Again, this is something we do every year. You know, necessary to put these re-levis, put these bills essentially onto people's tax bills as a tax and delinquent bills that were not paid in the course of regular business, I guess we shall say, between approximately November 1st of 2019 until November 1st of 2020.
So Judy, would you want, you wanted to steal directly with each resolution? Start with 118 and you have any issues or questions with Resolution 118, 12120?
Well, again, we got, we got the resolution language this, late this afternoon, so I just want to read through the resolution language. Sometimes there's.
Brett put them together using essentially last year's template.
Yeah, but sometimes what happens, and you know, I am noticing that there's a, I'm missing one of the, one of the numbers, the last whereas just not, doesn't change the numbers, but it's good to, you know, for somebody to be checking the, the addition, so I'll, I'll do that and make sure that these add up. You know, there's, there's a reason why there's a second set of eyes on these, I think, is my point. So on so miscellaneous, we are adding up numbers there, that's what I'm referring to. 9802 3278. Originally, I don't have my calculator on this floor. So, I mean, so the water one is very basic, the miscellaneous, we should be checking the math on that. And do we have the the bid?
No, the bids not pass their budgets yet. And I, I spoke with the county about it and they're okay with those being passed on the 21st by the council. We should have everything to you by the end of the week, the downtown and central have bids, have their meetings the next couple of days. I think lark is next week, next Monday. But I believe that we're, we should be able to at least get the material to the council to put it together under the resolutions ready. Once the bids pass their, pass their budgets, so I can say that they're largely the same as prior years.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
So I'll just do the math on that one, we levy and we're on the, on the assessment allocation. Well, we, I just want to see last year's resolution.
She has resolutions on the screen.
Last year's resolution.
All right, my version was all bowled up, so I had to go find a clean version, so thank you, JR.
Okay, so last year we referred to 2019 when we did this. And last year we did change the percentages and we had that language in there regarding it's not a change to the differential. Does anybody know what our differential was last year? Was it 0%?
0% as compared to the year before?
No, I'm talking about the differentials that the that the state allows us to make the adjustments.
Oh, the equalization rate?
No, that's something different. No, this is when we do the local adjustments to the adjusted base proportions. We are given, if you're, if we're doing something different for homestead versus non-homestead, and not everybody in the state does this. If you do that, then you are, I think they refer to whether you do it at 10%, 0%, 10%, 20%, et cetera, and 100% would be you're just keeping your, what the naturally occurring differentials are, right, the naturally occurring base proportions are, so you're, you know, this year, that would be 61 and, and 0.1 and 38.9 essentially.
Yeah.
According to what the, what the real property office, state real property office gave us.
My, I think Mike Wheeler has that information, but he's not here today, but might be able to find him. David, perhaps to see if you can shoot it over.
Yeah, so, I mean, if we take language out of the resolution, I guess that solves the problem. I just don't know if, if we want to do that just because we can't answer the question about whether or not the 0% is what is being referred to as the differential. And I don't know that whether the resolution requires us to state whether or not we're changing the differential or not. I don't know what the real property.
Yeah, I'm looking at the RPTL right now, hopefully.
So why don't we move on and let you continue to work that problem, Brett?
Any other questions for me? All right.
I don't have any.
Speak now or forever hold your peace.
Thanks. I don't, I don't have any either. Thank you, Darius, for getting us this information and I understand the challenges at the end of the year.
Made more, made more difficult this year. But thank you, everyone.
Okay, so that, those are the three MCs, so 117, 118, 119. Onto our fourth MC, it's Mr. Rubens, Resolution 1212120R. Richard, do you want to?
Yeah, this is the resolution we talked about at caucus last week, which I sent out over the weekend. Initial draft, this, this final one had, takes some typos and grammatical issue corrections in it, but basically this is the same one I sent out earlier over the weekend and I have all members listed as co-sponsors.
Thank you. All right, and that'll be a pass. That's it for the the MCs, then moving on to resolutions. Held. Got numbers. Resolution cell 104 through 109, their reappointments to the BZA. It's Richard Berkeley, Serena Joyce Whiteley, Martin Daley, Raja Rice Gill, Paige Barnum and Jeff Queen, your appointments to the BZA. My apologies, Richard Berkeley is here. I, I messed up, I didn't have Michelle reach out to the, the new members to have them present here tonight, so.
Can somebody, can somebody please put me in, in a waiting room?
Hey, she's still there. Now she's not there. So yeah. From any, yes, any and all.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so again, these resolutions are reappointments. Some are reappointments or two new appointments. I apologize for not having the, the folks come in. But I know during the, that meeting, that planning meeting, I think most of the members were there through the questioning, in the conversation around the appointments. At least most members were there, so again, if you guys want to hear from the, the two new, we can have them come in next, into our next caucus to introduce themselves and tell you guys a little bit about themselves, if, if members are okay with that.
You know, under the rules, as long as a member, as long as an appointee appear before the committee, it's not a requirement that they have to come back for the full council.
And just to point out that they can, council members can go to the planning committee meeting since it's online. If they're interested in meeting the, listening to the new appointees.
Okay, but one of these was supposed to be amended to change the term.
Are you referring to the Paige Barnum?
I believe it was Paige, is that one?
Well, yes.
I thought we were, she was being appointed through to the end of the year, we were going to do a second round of appointments, the second round of appointing resolutions.
I've lost track of it also.
Yeah, that was, yeah, that was my. Even though it seems kind of kooky to go a month and then redo it, I mean, it's, but that's.
I thought she was being appointed to fill a vacant, I guess the vacancy, whatever.
Yeah.
I just lost track of the whole thing, so I don't know. The issue was to get these staggering back in order.
Yeah, and the new, the reappointment resolution, which will come out in the next agenda or the one thereafter. That, that will put her to 2022, which should reestablish the stagger.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I believe it's it for the agenda. And so, anyone have any questions, comments on the agenda? What I would like to talk to members about is that we have those mandatory trainings. You know, diversity, sexual harassment and whatnot.
Councilmember Dochee be brought back in.
Oh, yes, thank you very much, Brett.
The third one is workplace violence prevention.
Okay, Judy, we're back on. So, so, okay, I was just talking to members about the mandatory trainings, there are three. If you haven't done so, please, we need to have those completed. I believe there's, there are some ramifications with the Department of Labor if it doesn't get taken care of, so please jump on and take care of those issues.
The other thing is, for any that you have done in your job, some of them are specific to Albany that you'll have to do, but if you've done the sexual harassment prevention training in your job, you can share proof of that with with staff and that, and you don't have to then redo it, you only have to do it once. But there are several that are Albany-specific for free training, so I think the workplace prevent, the violence, workplace violence prevention is specific to Albany. And then not everywhere mandates diversity training, so. So if you have proof of any of those, you can share those with Danielle and you do not have to retake them.
So now we've, little time on our hands.
Kelly, can I just mention something quickly? Kelly, can I just mention something quickly? And then maybe we can all, I don't know, stretch our legs or something for a minute, but, um, I just wanted to bring up that, um, the thing that we had talked about before in terms of evaluating our staff and going through that process and just to let people know that that's also be putting together, uh, working with leadership to put some things together to, with that, so we'll be able to talk about that in a more full way.
Yeah, okay.
Regarding to Resolution 117, 121, 20 hour, um, the homestead non-homestead adjusted base proportion. Uh, I don't see anywhere in, in the relevant section of the RPTL where it says we have to define. What's the phrase I'm looking for there?
We don't have to say whether or not we're changing the differential.
Yes, thinking the differential, yeah.
All right, so we're gonna be taking that out because we're not 100% sure what that means in this. Is that what?
I think so.
Uh, and I do want to note that, um, I did do the addition on that miscellaneous relevee just to make sure all the numbers that are stated in the resolution add up to the total that we're authorizing in the, uh, the entire total, the sum total that, that appears in that resolution. So we're set on that.
So yeah, uh, from our leadership meeting, uh, we, we, we did talk about, um, the mayor, uh, re-engaging the COVID work at home plan. It was called something along those lines, but some folks are working from home again. City Hall's not shut down like most, uh, or some of the other city halls in the area. It's still open, but, uh, men, some, uh, employees are working from home. She, uh, Mayor also mentioned that, uh, they implemented a planned, uh, kind of succession, kinda disaster planning and, uh, and what she's done is make, is making an effort to make sure none of her command staff or top department heads are all in one area at the same time, you know, like the, the, the commissioners and the deputies, she's keeping them all separate. So in the event of, you know, one gets COVID, it doesn't take down the, you know, her whole department, which is, uh, which is smart. She mentioned, uh, and I don't have many notes, surprise. Jenny, you, you've got your, uh.
I do, yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, she said the buildings were going to remain open, um, but as Kelly mentioned, within the departments, like separation within the departments, um, so that the command staff of each individual department will not be out if anybody gets sick. The, she also, uh, another big piece is the police collaborative. I think people have seen there's seven public meetings that are coming up. And it would be great if everyone can share that out to try to get as much input as possible. And, uh, there's a deep desire to learn and discuss things with community members. And, um, they will need to, it's not going to be broadcast on Facebook. You will need to actually get a Zoom code and sign into it, um, so that people that are kind of offering, community members are able to, um, offer input in not a very public forum. It might be more comfortable for them.
Do you have to sign in for each individual one, uh, because they do have different topics, or is there like one universal sign in?
I think you have to sign in for one, for each individual one. I could be wrong with that. We can double check that, but, um, it was my understanding that we'd have to sign in with each individual one. I can ask.
And there was emphasis on a focus of city of Albany residents because we quite often, uh, have folks that aren't from the city, uh, weighing and, and sometimes they're the loudest voices and, and that's not necessarily a good thing. There was a recognition that obviously with COVID and was supposed to be some in-person engagement with community and obviously we can't do that stuff. So really, social media, members with huge social media presence, sorry, just anyone with a social media's presence, the, the mayor's staff is looking for us to help, uh, get to, to get input from community members um, and connect to, you know, the folks that we represent and make sure their voices get heard in, in this, in this effort. So, uh, Richard.
Yeah, so the pu- uh, public, our Public Safety Committee is meeting, uh, on Monday to continue our discussion. What is, I mean, since we haven't had any real discussions on it since our last, where we've got a lot of public input and et cetera. What is the intent with this meeting coming up on Monday?
It's to try and, uh, there's that second letter with some, some, uh, like, just incorporating that and, and talking through that. Um, I, I think, uh, there were some, you know, in the, the previous meeting back of, you know, the police department stated what they, you know, making the tweaks and kind of changing as best we can, the input, adding the input that we got from the last, uh, the last meeting to try to get closer. I mean, I, in the end, I, I'm sure probably some of the, uh, the police department may not be happy with some of the, the final, you know, things that end up in there, but, um, it may be, I mean, I'm sure there are gonna be some community members that don't think it goes far enough, but either way, we're trying to.
So it's, so to look at specific modifications to the proposals that we've introduced.
Yeah, yeah, there's nothing crazy flying in out of left field or any major changes, but input, I mean, we have members, uh, that, uh, we haven't, I haven't given input if you, you know, if you haven't and you want, and you have some thoughts on the issue, please, by all means. Uh, we've heard from like, you know, public safety member meetings, committee men, meetings and, and whatnot, but there are other members on the council that may have ideas or thoughts about how things should be also, but, um, reach out to me, um, or, or come to the meeting, to suggest any changes you think might, might be good, uh, to go. Any, yeah, Tom, you look like you're thinking.
Tom has his hand up and then DJ does as well.
I've got to unmute. Um, it's all of a different subject, so I don't wanna, in case DJ's still on the, the police subject. Um, some time ago, right when you took over, uh, Kelly, we were working with, um, with, my brain just went with Richard on the, uh, uh, Living Wage Committee that we would put together and we came up with people, we nominated Fred Pfeiffer's the one that jumps right out at me. And, you know, it's been over, well over a year and he's kind of disgusted. Can we push, get that or? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, Jenny, the, the RFP for that, right, just?
No, this is separate. So the, um, the, it's, and I think that that's actually an important thing to discuss because, um, I think the Living Wage Committee that Tom is talking about, actually, it's not.
Oh, it's non-union.
City, um, members, I think it has a larger kind of view of things than, um, the RFP that we're going up, that's actually digging into, city, like what's happening in the city in terms of our non-union personnel, so.
With the Living Wage Ordinance that we passed many years ago, it's, it's not, it's not related to that other.
I think they'll be able to use that information.
Right, and so, Tom, we, in numerous, uh, leadership meetings, we've had those discussions and, and keep or, or kept getting the, you know, COVID's an issue, this is an issue that, you know, that's an issue. We, I mean, we have to get back to that, but I, I mean, throughout the course of probably even this year, it's come up at least, I brought it up personally in at least two of the meetings.
We have brought it up, but I also will say, it might be getting muddy too, because we do have these two different things with similar names. So in fairness, um, to the administration bringing up both of them, it might be redundant. So I think that we'll bring up a lot more pointedly to discuss specifically the Living Wage Committee that you're talking about, Tom.
Yeah, and there was an ordinance passed back 10, 10 years ago. I mean, Richard will kind of remember it. You know, this committee just fell apart and we were ready to go and it was, you know, the mayor needed to appoint, I think, two people, if, if I remember. And if she had trouble, we could find people for her to appoint, I mean, but Richard has.
I think it was five, five members. The one name that they had come up with was Fred a long time ago. They had someone else. I don't know if that person cleared out. But we were waiting for, you know, basically, we want to see the whole slate rather than piecemeal approvals. And so that's why, I mean, and disappointing Fred wouldn't constitute a committee anyway, so. But yeah, we've been waiting a while for that and I, you know.
Right, and the last con- last conversations, it was Fred, uh, and then Megan, I forget her last name, she was.
I don't know if her name is officially mentioned or not.
Yeah, no, it was, it was, and, uh, and there was a, some issue with the deployment of her check. So they were building it, but then it, it, it stalled and we'll have to go, go back at, at them again, but we, I, in those conversations, uh, I, you know, I constantly say we need to do this or that, we gotta get going on this. I mean, we've had a lot of stuff going on and, and, and a lot of issues, but my argument would be that something slowed down, so this might have been a good opportunity to take advantage of the slowdown to try to, to, you know, fill these, but it just, it, um, a, a, a lot of stuff kind of got, got stalled and I, I apologize for that, but we are talking about it and we have had conversations about it.
Okay, and with Zoom meetings, it, it's a lot easier these days. I mean, we're finding with my union, it's unbelievable the amount of people we're reaching now. Thank you.
Too easy. It's too, it's like, every meeting like every night, sometimes too. It's, 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 it's a blessing and a curse, uh, at the same time, so, uh, sorry, I think we, we're about a minute or so over. Mr. President.
Yeah, I was.
Oh, I'm sorry, DJ, I'm, I'm so sorry. The, the people move around on this Zoom screen when people were in and out. I'm, I'm sorry.
But basically, uh, I just wanted to go back to the, um, comment that, um, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Farrell made about the, either the not using Facebook. I just wanted some clarity, wh- what was she, the point that she was trying to make? I missed that one.
It's, uh, so I will clarify, it's not my point or my choice, but just what the administration shared with me, it shared with leadership, that there was a feeling with the, um, people who are in charge of the police collaborative that, um, it would be best to have those public, those, uh, different focus meetings not broadcast on Facebook so that people speaking in them could feel comfortable to share, um, perhaps more information than they would if they were broadcast on Facebook.
Okay, thank you.
With that being said, we'll welcome everyone to tonight's, uh, December 7th, 2020, Albany Common Council Meeting. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President, all members can unmute themselves so that they're able to respond to their name. Anani.
Present.
Valerie.
Yeah.
Conti.
Present in the chamber.
Doshep.
Here.
Fahy.
Here.
Farrell.
Here.
Lynn.
Here.
Frederick.
Here.
Holly.
Present.
Igo.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kimbrough.
Here.
Love.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Robinson. 14 members present and one absent.
Thank you, um, Madam, um, Madam Chair, I mean, Madam Clerk, can you please put up the, uh, the flag, please? And at this moment, we will, uh, say to pledge allegiance to the flag. And after that, we'll have our moment of silence. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. May God liberty and justice. Thank you. As we continue on our agenda, is there any, uh, people signed up for public comment tonight?
Yes, Mr. President, we have about four or five people signed up for public comment tonight. Uh, the first person that has signed up is Jeff Crumpton. If Jeff Crumpton is with us.
Yep, I am here.
All of those who are signed up for public comment period tonight, you have five minutes to speak on any subject you wish to speak upon during public comment. Council members cannot respond to you, they cannot answer questions at that time if you should ask. Uh, common council members choose to, they will respond to those, uh, your public comment statements at a later period in the agenda of the meeting. Uh, once again, at a four-minute mark, I will tell you, you have one minute left to close up your remarks. So, uh, with that being said, and also can you state your name and address for the record as well? Uh, with that being said, can a clerk please call the first speaker?
Mr. President, our first speaker for tonight is Jeff Crumpton.
Thank you, um, Jeff Crumpton. I live at 367 Hamilton Street. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on the proposed change for ordinance number 4512219, the snow emergency provision. My name is Jeff Crumpton and I am the president of the Hudson Park Neighborhood Association. And I'm speaking on behalf of Hudson Park and Center Square Neighborhoods. As you know, two of the four neighborhoods adjacent to Washington Park. As members of our association, our members of the association support Councilmember Conti's proposed changes to the snow emergency ordinance. This is a common sense approach to modify the existing city code to address situations where a park-related event overlaps a declared snow emergency. There are several areas that I would like to address. First, this modification to code does not affect only one singular park, but would apply to all of our city parks. So although our immediate neighborhoods are most affected by Washington Park, it is not limited to just one area of the city. Second, residents who would, who would utilize the interior park streets for a declared snow emergency pay a yearly parking fee, a program that is included in this evening's agenda, under held resolutions 23, 41, 20R. Without suspending social event parking rules, residents are then paying for a service that they are unable to utilize. They are in effect being denied the service for which they pay as part of their yearly parking permit. Next, given the sheer number of residents that are required to move their vehicle during the odd and even parking restrictions, eliminating a sizable portion of available parking only provides more challenges for city residents. Furthermore, bear in mind that since this change is related to declared snow emergencies, that road conditions and accessibility will even be more challenging, further exacerbating the dangers for drivers and pedestrians. And finally, residents that travel for work to and from the neighborhood must contend with finding parking at the same time that city crews start clearing the even and odd sides of the streets. Residents in our neighborhood must contend with, the, I'm sorry, uh, residents in the more suburban parts of our city are unaware of the logistical challenges that our neighborhood residents must contend with during these snow emergencies. The idea that it only adds a few more minutes to a daily commute is problematic in its logic and doesn't align to the reality of the situation. Residents routinely can spend half an hour or more trying to find parking during these times. In closing, while I think this simple change does not solve all the resident issues as it relates to parking and special events, it will provide some relief when weather, winter weather occurs in our city. As all members of the common council are aware, residents in our neighborhoods bear the brunt of a number of special events in, through and around Washington. residents in our neighborhoods bear the brunt of a number of special events in, through and around Washington Park. We recognize that each of these groups are committed to supporting a variety of excellent causes and we commend those efforts. We support those organizations and their missions as well and do not believe the proposed change would negatively impact these special events. Thank you very much for your time and I see back that time.
Thank you so much. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have another speaker for this evening. I believe it's Mr. Marcus that is our next speaker.
Mr. Marcus, are you there?
Spencer Marcus of twenty-seven Western Avenue is supposed to be the next speaker. I don't see Mr. Marcus. If you'd like, Mr. President, I can move to the next speaker.
Yeah, and if he comes back on, we'll try to go ahead.
Perry John Julis is our next speaker of seven twenty-eight Madison Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Danielle. I'm Perry John Julis, Executive Director at the Albany Damien Center and I'm a resident of the city of Albany, living at sixteen Marion Avenue, as well as a person who is living with AIDS. The resolution proposed tonight to reverse the three forty B Medicaid carve-out addresses one of the largest threats to our safety net providers across New York State with a net of one hundred and fifty million per year annually being raided by Governor Cuomo, the Department of Health, and the Division of Budget. Yes, I say raided, as this is not their money. Three forty B is a federal program established in nineteen ninety-two that allows agencies like the Albany Damien Center to purchase medications at discounted prices and use that savings paid for by providers for social services that we cannot fund elsewhere. This change disproportionately impacts our black and brown communities at a time when systemic change in health equality is demanded. The needs of people also because of the COVID pandemic have additionally made this change a disastrous move. As we are working to keep people, to help keep, keep people safe and the data is now showing that unfortunately persons with HIV are more likely to die than the general population if they contract COVID. In the city of Albany, the Whitney Young Health Center, Albany Medical Center, and the Albany Damien Center will lose millions of dollars annually that are reinvested back into our safety net system. At the Albany Damien Center alone, we are projected to lose one point four million dollars each year, a full one quarter of our annual operating budget. This change takes effect on April first, but I have already had to inform five staff, five of our forty staff, that they will be let go on January first, the first round of cuts I'm anticipating. Our three forty B program in Albany supports our meal program, our housing, transportation, mental health services, and support for access to medications and medical care for the persons who are the most vulnerable in our city of Albany community. I'd like to thank Richard Conti and also the council members who have supported this resolution, calling for the governor and the New York State Legislature to take action now to reverse the three forty B Medicaid carve-out before lives are lost in the city of Albany and throughout New York State. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you for your work. Thank you.
Mr. President, Zachary Simpson is our next speaker for the evening.
You do, Mr. Simpson.
Hi, good evening. Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the Common Council for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Zachary Simpson. I reside at one seventy-five Homestead Avenue. I am the newly elected Chair of the Council of Albany Neighborhood Associations, also known as KNA. I'd like to speak tonight in strong support of the resolutions honoring the former Chairs of KNA, Harold Rubin and Howie Stoller. I'd first like to speak about Harold Rubin, who recently passed at the age of ninety-three and my heart goes out to his wife Ruth and their family. In nineteen seventy-six, Harold Rubin co-founded KNA and served as KNA's Chair for the first twenty years. Harold was well-known as a man of strong moral character and integrity. He believed that receiving municipal services was a matter of right, not as a favor. He was a major part of the fight against the Empire State Plaza arterial connector that would have gone through the heart of Center Square and the Washington Park. He was KNA's main spokesperson, especially at hearings on the city budget. He fought for years to allow members of the public to make comments at public, at Common Council meetings. He also pushed to have the Board of Zoning Appeals meetings to be held in the evening instead of the daytime when most people were at work. He was totally committed to openness and transparency in government. In two thousand and one, after Margie Skinner served as KNA's Chair for five years, Howie Stoller stepped up and accepted the KNA Chair mantle in what was intended to be a year or two of service. Howie dutifully served as KNA's Chair for twenty years, just like Harold. Howie Stoller brought KNA into the twenty-first century with storing email communications, meeting agendas, and meeting minutes online for members of the public in the city to review. Howie worked to engage KNA in issues directly relevant and important to our neighborhoods, from gun violence to affordable housing to code enforcement and others. He oversaw the twenty-ten census in the city of Albany and was a constant participant in the MS Bike Ride, raising thousands of dollars throughout the years. Last year, Howie proudly represented KNA and marched in the first ever African Heritage Parade in the city of Albany. During Howie's last meeting as KNA Chair, he spoke eloquently about Harold Rubin's legacy. And he reminded us all of what KNA is and why it's so important to preserve. KNA is a nonpartisan Federation of Neighborhood Associations that participates fully in matters that affect the quality of life of its constituents. KNA's motto is, what is good for the residents of all of these neighborhoods is good for the vitality, well-being, and growth of the entire community. So now that I'm taking the helm as the fourth Chair of KNA, I am very grateful for the work of my predecessors and the tracks they have laid down before me. We are living in unprecedented and challenging times and I intend to ensure the continued vibrancy of KNA and its participation in decisions affecting our city in the months and years ahead. Like all of you and like Harold and Howie, I value our neighborhoods and I recognize all the work that still needs to be done. So on behalf of the members of KNA, thank you all for honoring Howard, Harold Rubin and Howie Stoller, two very accomplished individuals and outstanding pillars of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Zachary, and congratulations. You do stand on mighty shoulders and there's a foundation. So congratulations and good luck. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Shadi Kadivi is our next speaker of four twenty-seven State Street.
Hi, my name is, can you guys hear me? Hi, my name is Shadi Kadivi. I am the President of the Washington Park Neighborhood Association. I'm here on behalf of the Neighborhood Association as a resident and a resident as well. And I'm speaking with respect to the ordinance four-five-one-two-two-one-nine, the snow emergency ordinance or modification that Richard Conti has proposed. I'm here to advocate for the fact that on snow emergencies in the office situation, that snow emergencies happen and there is an event in the park, particularly directly to the constituents of my Neighborhood Association. I'd like to make sure that there's an accommodation and amendment made to let residents park in the park. Last year, we had several instances where we had an early snow season and there were several snow emergencies and the residents were not allowed to park in the park during the snow emergency. So we understand that this impacts all parks, but particularly we do have a shortage and in snow emergencies, we want to make sure that the residents that pay for their parking fees are able to park in the park, especially since we, a lot of us don't have access to our own parking spots. We park on the street. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Me. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
That was all that I had for public comment unless Mr. Spencer has joined us. And I don't see a Mr. Spencer joining us.
I don't see him. Okay, at this time, public comment period would deem closed at this time. We're going to move on to approval of minutes. Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer the meeting minutes from the Council's November sixteenth, the twenty-twenty meeting for approval.
Have a second on that? All those in favor?
I.
See hands. Minutes approved. Uh, we will continue on down the agenda for considerations of local laws. Mr. Conti.
Actually, I think you want.
Igo.
Igo, sorry, yes.
Mr. President, I introduce local.
Buddy, go ahead.
Local law N of twenty. That'd be passed and call for a roll call vote thereon. This bill was reported out of committee last, last Thursday evening with a five-zero recommendation.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the local law?
Local law N. A local law amending chapter three sixty-three of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to the creation of an application and licensing process for door-to-door vendors.
Is there any discussion in the local law? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani.
Yes.
Ballerin.
Yes.
Conti.
Yes.
Doshe.
Yes.
Fahy.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yes.
Frederick.
Yes.
Holly.
Yes.
Igo.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kimbrough.
Yes.
Love.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Fourteen in the affirmative.
Local law passes. We're moving on to reports of standing committees. I know we had a few, who would like to go first? Mr. Igo? You have to unmute yourself, Joe. There you go. Go ahead.
Mr. President, last Thursday, December third, law billing and coach committee met and we took up three proposed piece of legislation. One we just passed, which I don't understand why we pass them before we give the, the notices, but the other two were Mr. Conti's, one that was just discussed by a lot of the public speakers about parking in the snow emergencies. And another one was Mr. Hoey's piece on making the Hen ordinance permanent. They all passed committee.
Thank you, Ms. Igo. Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed that the Finance Committee has a meeting on December seventeenth at five thirty PM and I look forward to seeing committee members and anybody that would like to join us there.
Thank you. Ms. Fahy? Did I report?
Uh, the, I think I already gave that report, but the planning committee met and to review and review the appointment of new members and reappointed members to the Board of Zoning Appeals and all of the individuals were approved with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. I know, I, I think that's all.
No, no, I still have the goal. Yeah.
Oh, HR, that's right. Hi, Mr. Kimbrough.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety met on November thirtieth to review applicants for the CPRB. We had a good group of applicants and we ended up choosing Paul Collins Hackett to fill the vacant seat. He will be at our caucus on the sixteenth to introduce himself. Some members are probably familiar with him in any case. So he'll be here for that. We also have a public safety, public safety meetings on December ninth and tenth where we'll be reviewing applicants for our Violence Prevention Task Force. Uh, that's two days. I think we have six or seven interviews each day to fill out that task force. And lastly, on December fourteenth, Monday, we will be meeting to try to finalize the, the police reform pieces of legislation that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough. No, no further reports of any standing committees. Moving on to considerations of ordinances, we have no ordinance as held. I mean, no one's introduced, so we'll move on to ordinances held. Mr. Conti.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance forty-five point one twenty-two point nineteen asterisk passage and a roll call vote thereon.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Conti. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending chapter three fifty-nine in relation to the suspension of special events in certain city parks during a declared snow emergency.
Is there any discussion on this ordinance?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so thi- this ordinance is an amendment to the city's snow emergency rules. Specifically, it would apply, it would provide that special events in the city parks that are otherwise designated for snow emergency parking shall be suspended for the duration of the declared snow emergency to the extent such special event would otherwise restrict the availability of snow emergency parking. So it's directly related to the availability of snow emergency parking. And just to, you know, really quickly recap what a snow emergency is, everybody knows what a snow emergency is, but when that's declared and especially in the downtown neighborhoods or wards, which are much more densely populated and where on-street parking is difficult to come by, but once a snow emergency is declared, fifty percent of the on-street parking is eliminated. That's, that's a rather significant reduction in the availability of on-street parking and residents need to move their cars to the alternate side of the street or find another area to park so as to allow for the DGS to do their snow removal and clear the streets. Residents are also asked to take, to stay off the streets for unnecessary driving, again, so that you don't have unnecessary traffic and motor vehicles on the streets impeding snow removal, snow removal efforts. In, when, when the snow emergencies are declared, the city provides, especially for the downtown areas, a number of off-street options for overflow parking. Uh, there's the brochure, which is not really showing up there, uh, but everyone is familiar with the snow emergency brochure and the standard locations that are publicized, which are standing locations that everybody knows about. One of the essential parts of the snow emergency system in order for it to work is it has to be simple, consistent, and uniform. So when you begin to have variations in the rules that might change from year to year or month to month, creates confusion. One of the problems is, in my area, which happened last year, in particular, happened once before many years ago in Washington Park with an event, the light, light show in the park, which takes up basically the whole park and eliminates the availability of off-street parking. When we had a snow emergency declared last year around this time, um, there were difficulties in terms and of residents being able to access the publicized parking that they were supposed to have access to and ordinarily would have access to and they were restricted from being able to access the park. We had to intervene to try to clarify that. Uh, we had to intervene, uh, to try to clarify that, uh, with the mayor's office and the A P D, uh, to, to open those areas up so that they would indeed have access. Um, this year, uh, there is a provision in the M O U, um, regarding that show that does provide that in the event of declared snow emergency, uh, that the event will be suspended. That, that was added very specifically to what happened last year. Uh, it happened after I introduced my ordinance and after I advocated with the mayor's office also, uh, that some, something like that really needed to be included while we were also considering this proposed ordinance. So that's how that provision got there. Um, but in order, you know, to, to really safeguard this provision moving forward, um, I think it's important that we codify, uh, that provision. Uh, and that's what my ordinance would do, put it in the city code. Um, I will also note that my ordinance does have the full support of the mayor who agrees, uh, that it's important to codify, codify this position in city code as well. Uh, so the administration is on board with this approach also. And again, it's important that there be a consistent rule, uh, that everybody can point to, so we don't have this situation again. Uh, we don't have any kind of modifications. Um, it would apply to other city parks only to the extent that those parks might be used during a snow emergency for overflow parking and only to the extent that there is a special event in the park that might impede that parking. I'm not aware of anything else, but it would provide a protection to the extent that that might be out there. Um, and, you know, I would also argue to some extent, my language is a little bit more flexible than what's in the M O U. Uh, but it, it, it is important, I think, that we have a standard provision, uh, in the snow emergency rules, uh, that can be pointed to and that will provide the protection, uh, and the availability of that parking moving, moving further. Um, when we first actually adopted these rules under the Wayland administration, I believe, uh, if we had known this would have been an issue, it would have been included back then. Uh, but, you know, we didn't know, uh, it, it would be an issue. It happened once before many years ago. Uh, we didn't address it then, and that's why we had the situation last year. Uh, so again, I think it's important that we just codify what is in the M O U so that there be a clear standard moving forward and we don't have this issue again. So I appreciate, uh, uh, member's support, uh, for this, uh, tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Any further discussion on this ordinance? Seeing on, can a clerk please call the roll?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. President. You know, I've, I've shared my sentiment as a relation to this ordinance. Um, and, you know, after gathering more information from the executive director, um, I think I am still going to be voting no on, uh, th- this legislation. First, I'd like to ta- tell, you know, talk a little bit about what the Police Athletic League is about. You know, it's a juvenile criminal prevention program here in the city of Albany. Um, they try to bridge the gap between law enforcement and also with our youth. Um, and to, they service over four thousand youth every year in our city. Um, and one of their biggest fundraising mechanisms is actually the lights in the park. And that is, uh, on the average, uh, they make roughly anywhere from thirty-five hundred to four thousand dollars, uh, per event. Um, this legislation, I believe, would have, uh, an impact on a number of groups who hold events, uh, specifically, uh, lights in the park that is held by the Police Athletic League. Uh, I believe that these type of legislation quite frankly, needs to be left to the discretion of city administration. Not create a blanket policy with little room for adjustments, right? Um, you know, to pass a local law, there's a process that has to go and most of the time it's a long process. It's not something that can happen overnight. Um, currently, the city of Albany has an agreement, a memorandum of understanding with this nonprofit already. So that is what the fundamental, uh, difference is between the sponsor and I on this specific legislation. The city has a contract with this nonprofit that in case of a snow emergency, um, uh, they won't have an event. I spoke to the executive director. He believes that this is unnecessary, is adds unnecessary burden, not just for Washington Park, but all across, uh, the city of Albany, uh, particularly when it comes to having events at, um, our parks. Next, I'd like to talk about more. So the sponsor mentioned that, uh, this would have, uh, you know, bringing up the lights in the park during caucus meeting and I thought that it would have a, a negative impact. I spoke to the executive director of the, uh, Police Athletic League. He believes not only is this going, this legislation unnecessary, but would also harm other organizations and their organizations. So again, the MOUs are easy to change, legislation is a process. And I think that moving forward, if we want to legislate every M O U, what is the point of having a memorandum of understanding? So that's why I'll be voting against this legislation. Uh, another issue too, that I have some serious concern is that the executive director has been, uh, a steward a statesperson for this city, has done phenomenal work. And when this piece of legislation was brought up the first time, uh, quite frankly, the executive director heard about it was, uh, two days ago about having, uh, this, uh, legislation passed. And again, he this, he agrees that this piece of legislation is unnecessary. If a nonprofit has a contract with the city of Albany, that should be sufficient enough. If they're not following it, then you get away, you, you break the contract. So thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, I'll be voting no.
Any further discussion? Mr. Conti. And oh, wait, wait, Ms. Duchesne, if you're going to speak, because once Mr. Conti speaks, no one else can speak since he's the sponsor. So, Ms. Duchesne, so if you're going to speak, council members, please, you know, let us know. Go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Um, to me, this is a common sense, um, ordinance. Uh, I will be supporting it. I'd like to be, uh, reflected as being a co-sponsor, uh, on this as well. Uh, I've lived in Albany for over forty years and I've been through, uh, many, uh, difficult snowstorms where the city has struggled, uh, to, uh, create a system that, uh, enables it to address, uh, large snowstorms. This isn't about your two or three inches, uh, on the streets. This is, you know, about eight, ten, sometimes two feet, you know, uh, eight, eight or ten inches or two feet, um, where it becomes necessary for the city to call a snow emergency. And it's very clear what the rules are. And, um, the whole point is to get people to get their cars off the street so the roads can be cleared so that the roads are safe for everybody. We can't ask our residents to do the impossible and get their cars off the road if they don't have driveways and they don't have other places to park the cars. So accommodations have been made. People have recognized that this is a problem with a snow emergency. So accommodations have been made for people to park in the Empire State Plaza, for people to park in certain other, uh, locations, uh, in the city during a snow emergency, which is terrific. We have a solution. The solution only works if we consistently apply that solution. Personally, I'm not thrilled with the idea of any organization, regardless of its financial needs, encouraging people to come out during the snow emergency before the roads are all cleared to, um, to, to go to a particular, um, event. I think that in those extraordinary circumstances, just like we have extraordinary circumstances right now where, uh, people are dealing with the realities of a situation and they make accommodations. I think in those circumstances, you simply need to recognize that, uh, we need to have our priorities in place. Enabling people to get their cars off the roads so the roads can be cleared for everybody uh, is, is simply common sense and I appreciate, uh, Mr. Conti bringing this issue to our attention and dealing with it, uh, directly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duchesne. Any further comments before, uh, Mr. Conti speaks? Okay, Mr. Conti's the last speaker on this issue. Go ahead, Mr. Conti.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Now, just note, actually, um, we haven't had access to parking at the Empire State Plaza uh, since, uh, the, the nine eleven attack on the World Trade Center. Uh, and ever since then, the state has not allowed us to use that, uh, for parking. I believe the garage in the mansion neighborhood is sometimes made available, but that's also all dependent on when a snow emergency happens and whether or not, uh, state workers are going to be, going to be needing it. Um, just a couple of points. Um, I, I know that the executive director of PAL was aware of this shortly after it was introduced, uh, last year. Uh, so it's not a new issue. Um, and I want to make very clear, this is not about PAL or their mission, uh, which we all support and I support and I'm grateful for what they do. Uh, and, and, you know, that, that's not the issue here. It's really, uh, the uniformity in the rules so that people know what's available and not available. Um, and that's why you really need a uniform standard, not something that changes or can change every year. Uh, and that it's, it's confusion sometimes in the snow emergency sys- system that causes, uh, car towing. We have a lot of turnover in terms of people, students who move in and out, other transient populations who move in and out of our, our neighborhoods. Um, and it, we, there's not always the time to re-educate constantly on the nuances of a snow emergency. That's why it needs to be very simple, uh, the same all the time, uh, to kind of enhance compliance. Um, and as I say, it is a uniform policy. Uh, I don't know of any other special event in a city park that happens that would be impacted by this, frankly. Um, because this really involves cars driving through the park and taking up areas that otherwise would be made available for off-street parking. Uh, a special event that happens in the park, uh, that doesn't in- involve, uh, you know, the use of parking spaces would not be canceled. It, it would continue. So i- it's very narrowly tailored only to those events that might impact the availability of, uh, overflow parking and only to the extent that it might impact that parking. Um, now, I, you know, I'm, I'm, uh, aware and appreciative of this is the major fundraiser for PAL and I think one of the things that we had discussed, um, you know, in, during the meeting, law committee meeting was, uh, and again, the, the, the likelihood of a snow emergency, uh, happening when, uh, the, the lights, uh, show is happening is, is kind of rare. Uh, when it happened last year, it was only the second time in my memory, uh, because snow emergencies don't happen all the time and we don't get that huge, uh, downpour of snow all the time. So it, you know, it, it's kind of a hit and miss whether it might happen during the show. But, you know, you can also, uh, add, uh, if it does happen during the light show, you can also add at the tail end uh, additional days to compensate for those days when the, when the snow, uh, emergency may have suspended the show. I will note, I think the PAL, the, the highlight, the, I'm sorry, the light show goes until, uh, January first. Uh, and Mr. Kimbrough cannot, his head, if I'm correct, uh, and, you know, the twelve days of Christmas actually go until January sixth, uh, which is the feast of the epiphany. So if you want to use it the whole, the twelve days of Christmas, uh, you're still within the season if you add a couple of days on after January first. Uh, and that's one way of addressing the financial concern, if that is a concern and that happens, uh, to be able to, uh, to continue. Um, and you might even, the show might even get more publicity by that as well and more, uh, more people coming out for it. Um, so again, uh, I just think it's, it's something with, do we need to do, the mayor is on board, she agrees that we need to do this. Uh, that we have the uniform policy, that we codify it, uh, and so that it's, it's a protection that's in code. Uh, and, you know, it, it's really important for the availability of parking that people know when there's a snow emergency, when it's publicized, that that parking will be available and not, you know, they try and all of a sudden something happens. So I would appreciate your support tonight. It's an important issue, uh, for residents downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. With that being said, can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani.
Uh, no.
Valerman.
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Dochette?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Fahy?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Farrell?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Twelve in the affirmative and two no votes.
Thank you.
Ordinance passes. We're continuing on with ordinance itself, Mr. Howie.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, uh, notice ordinance twenty-three dot one oh one dot twenty and ask for its passage on a roll call vote.
Thank you, Ms. Howie. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending, ordinance eight dot thirty-one dot nineteen entitled, an ordinance amending article eight of chapter one fifteen of the code of the city of Albany to authorize and permit the keeping of hens as adopted by the common council of the city of Albany on July first, two thousand and nineteen in relation to the expiration thereof.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Mr. Howie?
Yes, um, uh, we, this was a good ordinance that, um, people had concerns about. And what we decided to do was to put a sunset to see if any problems would pop up. And, uh, during the committee meeting, uh, people did talk, there was one or two, uh, problems that did come up, but they turned out to be hens that weren't licensed. So, uh, this, I think it'd be, is a good time to open this up. Um, during the COVID crisis, a lot of people decided to, um, raise their own, uh, hens for, uh, the eggs. Uh, we have seventy-four official hens in the city of Albany. I think there was nineteen, uh, people who applied for permits. Uh, it's a good law, I believe, and, uh, I hope people will go along with this to open it up, um, and make it permanent. Thank you.
Ms. Howie? Any further discussion on this ordinance? Mr. Conti?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, and I will be supporting this ordinance tonight and I note that, uh, that the original sunset was at, uh, December of next year and we're, we're going to sunset it, make it permanent, uh, a year earlier. I think that's a testament to this. Things of this, uh, I just wanted to note that out in Schenectady, the city council out in Schenectady, um, that proponents of a similar hen ordinance are having a real big struggle just trying to get something through out there. Uh, and, uh, you know, I happen to know the person, Chad Putnam, who's, uh, leading the efforts uh, in Schenectady and I shared some of the information that we had received from the building department on our experience, uh, which he found very helpful, uh, into their efforts and hopefully they'll be successful, uh, as we, uh, make this law permanent tonight. And I want to, you know, congratulate Mr. Uh, Howie for picking this up early on and moving it through. So I'll be voting yes and, uh, I'd like to be a co-sponsor.
And give us the Conti. Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, um, I'll also be voting in favor of it and, uh, I, yeah, I'm only where one, um, licensed person in my ward and I heard absolutely no complaints about it. And, uh, perhaps maybe not too many of our people know about it because only sixteen out of the seventy-four, seventy-five groups have been, uh, applied for. So I think it's good and I think it's.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Any further discussion? Mr. Onani?
Mr. Onani, Onani? Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, you know, as one of the prime sponsors, I know a lot of people want to thank, uh, my old friend, uh, Tom Howie, but it's, uh, an effort that was pushed by, uh, Tom Howie, Julie Dochette and, uh, my, uh, and myself, so just want to throw that out there. But no, I really want to thank, uh, uh, Tom for actually, for his leadership on bringing this, uh, environmental justice, food insecurity legislation forward. Um, I also want to thank all the members, you know, it started with legal counsel. When Jared was here, I want to thank Scott, you know, the Reddick Center, uh, you know, I want to thank John Raphael also to, to get us to this point, to make it, uh, permanent here in our city of Albany. Uh, since the backyard hen, uh, legislation was introduced, we, we looked at the history of this type of legislation, right? Some of the concerns that individuals have. we, we looked at the history of this type of legislation, right? Some of the concerns that individuals had, uh, particularly in the Pine Hills neighborhood. I remember I heard a story that it was a rooster on uh, South Island that used to wake up the neighborhood all the time, uh, right across from the Pine Hills Elementary School. So I had some concern generally, but you know, that's why we did a pilot, we listened to the residents and so far we have nothing but positive feedback. So we, uh, we also looked at what other cities did when they legalized backyard hens. And saw that thi- this was the best practice for uh, for moving forward. These efforts allowed us to produce uh, the, the pilot in the beginning and then where we wanted to sunset and now we'll try to make it permanent. I, I think this, eh, this legislation provides an appropriate regulatory approach that addresses residents' concerns about raising hens in the urban environment. It's why I wanted to be a sponsor of this legislation. So, you know, I talk about these type of legislation all the time, right? It's these type of legislation that encourage individuals to want to move into our city and encourage individuals to want to come and live in Albany. It also makes the, eh, the city of Albany the envy of the capital region. Like the sponsor, uh, Mr. Conti said, there are individuals who are working and struggling to pass these uh, type of legislation. I'm glad that we were able to get it done. And I just want to thank everyone that was involved in making sure that we make this a permanent uh, right here in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. So you know the further discussion? Can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani.
Yes.
Ballerin?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Conti?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Doschett?
Yes.
Bahe?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Farrell?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Glenn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Holly?
Yes.
Igo?
Co-sponsor, please.
Johnson?
No.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Thirteen in the effect, in the affirmative, one negative vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Or, ordinance passes. Continuing on with ordinance is held, uh, Mr. Ballerin.
Thank you, President Ellis. I asked that ordinance, ordinance twenty-four oh one two zero be read, introduced and passed.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending paragraph one of section forty-eight dash seventeen of article two of chapter forty-eight of the Code of the City of Albany, increase in the minority and women labor utilization plan for contractors from seventeen point eight percent to twenty-five percent.
Muted? Oh, you, okay.
Uh, did you, I'm sorry. An ordinance amending paragraph one of section forty-eight dash seventeen of article two of chapter forty-eight of the Code of the City of Albany, increase in the minority and women labor utilization plan for contractors from seventeen point eight to twenty-five percent.
Thank you. Discussion on the resolutions, I mean on the ordinance? Mr. Ballerin?
Thank you, uh, Council President Ellis. Um, this is a good policy change. Uh, it's been uh, something we've been working on for roughly eight months now. Trying to get the language corrected and having back and forth meetings with the administration, the, the the increase of the labor force will make it so that we have people who are working on our roads, people who are working on our projects, that look and represent more of the community and population of our city. Um, in addition to this, the city administration has also agreed to increase the dollar amount that goes to uh, black and women businesses from seventeen point five to fifteen percent. So that is a policy issue. Um, we don't have a say on that. That is a decision that could only be made by the administration. Uh, we only could change the, uh, the labor portion of it. Um, but by working on this, uh, corroboratively over the last few months, we were able to not just increase the labor part, but also increase the dollar parts to our, uh, our businesses. So that combination will make it so that we see a, uh, a better proportion of representation for the community that we, we represent. Uh, our city is uh, is over forty percent uh, minority. That is something that we need to recognize. So it's important that when we see individuals out on the streets and they're working on these projects, they, they look like our representation, but also not that, that they live in our city. And uh, it's a good way to try to recycle as much funds and as much resources as we can uh, to maximize uh, every dollar we can spend, uh, you know, to better our, our neighborhoods and our community. So this is good, good policy. Uh, it's been through several, several discussions and conversations. Uh, and I really do appreciate everyone that has worked on this and helped push this through the, through the process. Apologize to my dog, it's as excited as I am about this. Uh, so he's also in support of this. Uh, but, but thank you. Thank you, everybody, because it, you know, sometimes people don't realize how long it takes to get something to the floor.
That's right.
Takes a lot of time, a lot of effort. So I appreciate everyone to help push this through.
Thank you, Mr. Baller. Ms. Fredericks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just really want to commend the sponsor for putting forth this legislation. Um, when we talk about making systemic changes to our city, this is a legislation that mirrors that quite beautifully. Uh, seven percent increase, more than seven percent increases, uh, no, no small feat. So I want to thank the sponsor. Um, I'd be hearing my dog in the background, he's also excited for this legislation. Uh, but thank you very much for bringing this forward. Excited to see some changes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fredericks. Further discussion? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Ballerin?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes, and co-sponsor, please.
Doschett?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Bahe?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Farrell?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Glenn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Holly?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Igo?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Kimbrough?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Fourteen in the affirmative.
Ordinance passes. We're continuing on to uh, resolutions introduced, because there is resolutions introduced. Start with Mr. Onani. You have to, there you go. You unmute it.
Uh, can the clerk just read the resolution number? I don't have it with me right now.
Mr. Onani, that resolution is one one two dot one two one dot two zero R.
Yeah, and I asked for its passage on a roll call vote.
Introduction and passage. Thank you. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution calling on the United States Department of Homeland Security to halt all deportation proceedings for the length of the COVID nineteen pandemic as a means of restricting the global spread of this disease.
Any discussion? Stornari?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Um, you know, this pandemic has exposed uh, disparities in all our communities, but also uh, we look at what the United States Department of Homeland Security is, has continued to do and some changes that have happened, but they have continued to deport individuals from the United States during this global pandemic. The CDC uh, has come out against uh, what the Homeland Security is doing as relates to deporting individuals. Uh, and I think that it's important that we send a message that in these challenging times that we're in, we should try to minimize the spread of the coronavirus. And holding the deportation is not only going to benefit the United States, but also going to benefit our allies in other countries where th- these individuals are being deported. So I just want to thank everyone for being co-sponsors and uh, thank you, President.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, um, since we're all our co-sponsors on this bill, you don't have to do the roll call. So all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Resolution passes. Continuing on with resolutions introduced, Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed resolution number one thirteen point one two one point two zero R and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can a clerk? Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council recognizing and honoring Howard Stoller for his contributions to the city of Albany.
Discussion on the resolution. Ms. Farrell?
Um, and I, I think that Zach Simpson, who is the new Kena president, actually summed up um, what Howie has done really well, but we are so fortunate to have his leadership in our city for the past twenty years. And uh, Kena has done so much good and uh, Howie in that role has really changed what Kena is for the city. So we appreciate his, all that he's done and um, and I, I can't imagine him still not being involved in some way. So um, look forward to more that he'll do.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien?
Okay, uh, Howie Stoller has been the president of Kena for virtually the whole time I've been on the council, which I regard as a significant period of time. And I regard him as may, having made a significant contribution to our city as well as our other honorary, the very founder of Kena, Harold Rubin. But I do want to take this opportunity to give a shout out to Zach Simpson, a twelfth ward resident, but who's actually, I am confident will do a uh, great job as a Kena president. And he's really showed himself with our neighborhoods in the twelfth ward and even beyond with his Uptown Neighborhood Cooperative and a lot of creative ideas. He's on the rap road. A historical association, Board of Directors and a number of other outreach programs, too many for me to mention. I think Kena is alive and well and uh, I think it's good that we honor its founder and its long term, one of its other long-term presidents and continue strong Kena.
Thank you. See further discussions? Since we're all our co-sponsors on this, Madam Clerk, can you just call? Uh, everybody unmute themselves. So all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Night.
Resolution passes. Continue on to resolutions introduced, uh, Mr. Conti?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I notice, uh, I offer resolution one fourteen point one twenty-one point twenty R request its uh, passage.
Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council calling on Governor Cuomo and the New York State Legislature to protect the three forty B safety net providers and HIV special needs plans and the communities they serve.
Discussion on this resolution.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. First I want to, I want to thank uh, Parry Genjulis, who spoke uh, from the Damian Center, who spoke earlier. Uh, and he really summarized this issue and the importance, not just to the Damian Center, but to all the safety net providers, including Whitney Young and Albany Med in our area. Um, and I want to express my appreciation to all members who signed on as co-sponsors. Really, the, the, these proposed changes to the three forty B program that were included in the New York State budget um, will have a devastating impact on the health and welfare of Albany's most vulnerable residents. Um, and so tonight, uh, the Common Council will be joining hundreds of voices across the state and urging the legislature and the governor to revisit and reverse this policy uh, before it does harm. Um, I know that we are, this is part of a larger effort of that's being made by the broad-based coalition uh, to get similar uh, resolutions by local legislative bodies around the state uh, to, to weigh in on this. Um, I think we might be the first, but I'm sure that others throughout the state will be joining us. Uh, and again, I appreciate your support of this uh, tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Further discussion? Seeing we're all co-sponsors, we will do a voice vote on this as well. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Thank you. Resolution passes. Parry, thank you so much for your work at the Damian Center. City really appreciates all that you do. Thank you. Continuing on with resolutions introduced, Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed resolution number one fifteen point one two one point two zero R and ask for its introduction.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council consenting to the transfer of unassigned funds to cover wage increases owed under the Albany Police Supervisors Association collective bargaining agreement.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, of your referral to finance.
Thank you so much. Continuing on with resolutions introduced, Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you again, Mr. President. Uh, I noticed resolution one sixteen one twenty-one twenty R and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Uh, can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council establishing standard workdays for the Common Council as required by regulation three one five point four of the New York State Comptroller.
Any discussions on this resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes.
Ballerin?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Doschett?
Yes.
Bahe?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Holly?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Fourteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Um, Mr. Kimbrough, since our next four resolutions are going, resolutions we introduced are going to be majority consent. Can you just uh, read all four and ask for majority consent to add to tonight's agenda?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, requesting that we.
One, two, three, four.
There'd be resul- uh, motion to add by majority consent, resolution one one seven one twenty-one twenty R through one two zero one twenty-one twenty R.
All those, can we get a second on that motion?
Second.
He, he's got second. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Motion passes. So continuing on, uh, Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice uh, resolution number one seventeen point one two one point twenty R and ask for its introduction and passage as amended.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council establishing the locally adjusted base proportions of the homestead, non-homestead classes for property tax purposes pursuant to article nineteen of the Real Property Tax Law.
And just to note, I don't think that needs to be as amended because it hadn't been introduced when we made the change from caucus.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes.
Ballerin?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Doschett?
Yes.
Bahe?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Fourteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Continuing on with resolutions introduced, Ms. Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution number 118.121.20R and ask for its introduction and passage.
Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council authorizing the levy upon city of Albany properties for unpaid water and sewer charges.
Any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
Ballerin?
Yes.
Conti? Doschett?
Yes.
Fahy?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
See?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Fourteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passed. Continuing on, resolutions introduced, Ms. Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution number 119.121.20R and ask for its introduction and passage.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council authorizing the levy upon city of Albany properties for unpaid charges of the Department of Fire and Emergency Services, Department of Building and Codes, and the Department of General Services.
Any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes.
Ballerin?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Doschett? Fahy?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love? And O'Brien?
Yes.
That's fourteen in the affirmative.
Thank you. Resolution passes. Continuing on, resolutions held, Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer resolution 120.121.20R, request, request its passage.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Albany Common Council memorializing the life and contributions of Harold Rubin to the city of Albany and expressing its condolences to his wife and family upon his passing.
Thank you. Any discussion on this resolution?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Mr. Simpson, who spoke earlier. It was very difficult to try to condense into one resolution, thirty-nine years, a career, not just in public service with the state of New York, but a tremendous career, civic career with neighborhood groups, including Kena and several neighborhood associations. I don't think sometimes we realize how much of a contribution Harold made to really empowering neighborhoods and neighborhood groups and the organization of neighborhood groups as a potent force in our city, really to be a voice for the community outside of politics or the old political machine and to be able to influence and to be able to assure that residents and city neighborhoods got the services that they were entitled to and deserving of. I've known, I knew Harold for I don't know how long from, you know, before I was on the council, but certainly while a member of the council. And he was always studiously, very nonpartisan in his involvement and, you know, deliberately never registered in a political party to maintain his nonpartisanship, although he did eventually make a change once he finished. But he was my neighbor also, lived across the street from him on Chestnut Street for over twenty years. And he was, he was, I don't know, you know, someone who I learned a lot from, who gave me a lot of knowledge and imparted his experience and perspective on issues and I found very helpful. We had some really good conversations, you know, almost every day. So I really appreciate, you know, that we were able to express, recognize Harold tonight. And we might do something later on in the year, once we get back together, there will be a special service or memorial for him later that the family is planning when hopefully we are in a better time and we can get together and share our thoughts and memories. But tonight I really want to, you know, for the council to go on record and expressing our gratitude for what Harold did and also extending our condolences to his wife Ruth of seventy years. And, you know, Ruth and Harold were real, really partners in a lot of ways. Now, I'll tell you, sometimes when Harold was, would give me, he would be cleaning out his files because he would say, tell me that Mrs. Rubin has told me that I've got to start, you know, getting rid of this or that or whatever. A lot of his stuff was donated to the archives at Albany, U Albany, but sometimes he would give me some material that he had that he thought would be of interest because Mrs. Rubin told him he had to start getting rid of all this paper. But theirs was a relationship of deep love also, and in every way, they were partners as well. And they are both really missed in our neighborhood and I wish Harold's children and grandchildren well. And again, thank you for unanimously supporting this resolution tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Any further discussions? Thank you. Since we're all co-sponsors, just unmute yourself so we can just do a voice vote. Since we're all co-sponsors on this resolution, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution passes. Continuing on down on our agenda, moving to resolutions held, Ms. Fahy, and I believe on these next resolutions, Ms. Duchesne will recuse herself from these resolutions. Ms. Fahy?
That is correct. I asked to be placed.
Okay, I notice resolution 104.112.20R and ask for its passage and a roll call vote.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council consenting to the reappointment of Richard Berkeley to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you. Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. O'Brien?
On the resolutions regarding the appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals, I'm going to be voting present, and that is not passing judgment on any one of these proposed appointees. I know many of them and their credentials of all of them look certainly strong enough to be, to be on the board. My issue is with the process that was followed. Both the charter and the law say with deliberate purpose that the board is supposed to be appointed in segmented periods of time so that at no one time do we come to a point where we're virtually reappointing the whole entire board. And I know this came to our attention back in the wintertime earlier this year when the council followed through on a, on a matter that the zoning board had voted on and we realized that only one of the BZA members was current in their term. Now, I know by operation of law, they were still duly constituted to vote on the matters that came in front of them, and I didn't have any problem with that. But still, it was a call to the city, which we made aware of this fact, to kind of get their act together in terms of seeing that the law was followed and how the board was appointed and how all these terms of offices were meant to overlap and not be in the position we're in now. In fact, it seems so haphazard that one of the, one of the appointments is for a matter of just two weeks, which seems hardly worthy of us taking the time to do that. So I'm going to be upsetting myself on each of these, which again, is no, no bad reflection on any of the appointees. It's just the process that I think that...
Thank you, Mr. Brian. Mr. Anani?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to speak on behalf of the individuals who are going to be appointed. I've known some of them and you look at their resume, really impressive, hardworking. They care about this city. They, they want to see this city move in the right direction. And I just want to, you know, put on record that, you know, these individuals are voluntary, some of them are voluntary, some are beginning to pay. Just want to show my support for the hard work and dedication that they have shown to our city over the years and continue to show. It's a really diverse board. I think this is the most diverse that I've seen in the past as it relates to the BZA. So I just want to commend and congratulate the individuals who are being appointed and I look forward to them moving the city forward with common council members.
Thank you. Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. So we're about to embark on confirming the appointment or reappointment of six members, all of whom are, all of which are for terms that have expired and which have either been left vacant for a while or the member that is being reappointed has already served basically a full term, got a freebie, you might say. And now we're confirming that, that's why you have, see, some of the appointments here are for only two weeks. This is an issue that I've raised in the past about, again, the council's advising consent authority, which was something that was hard fought for and won for the BZA and the planning board when the charter was adopted in 1998 and when members are just casually allowed to serve way beyond the term, their, the expiration of their term and continue because they're allowed to serve until someone is appointed to replace them. That undercuts our advising consent authority. And the other thing is that the general city law, which authorizes and provides for the establishment of BZAs as well as planning boards, very deliberately provides that terms to these boards are staggered in a way so that a certain number comes up each year, an even number comes up each year. That is, that is deliberate to allow us to have, you know, our, you know, advising consent authority where we're looking every year at a fixed number, not having six names thrown at us at once. So it was never the intent or under, under the general city law, under the, under the city charter that we'd be doing this. Has nothing to do with the individuals who are before us tonight, some of whom I've known for a long time, but it's the process that's the problem. And I don't think we can just keep on casting off, you know, the process because that undercuts our authority as well. It's not with the zoning board only. There are two members of the, the planning board whose terms have expired. One, actually now they will both have been for over a year, two years, where we're still waiting for whether or not the reappointments there. Historic Resources Commission is again another one where there is significant, I think, this, just about all the members except one are serving expired terms, some long expired. And as discussed earlier tonight, we're still waiting on the living wage compliance committee, which was authorized many years ago. There was a board, it sort of got, became dormant. We reconstituted the board and gave it new authority and that board is still, you know, laying fallow, you might say. So this is, this is an important issue, this, you know, people might dismiss it, but the process issue is important because it goes to the heart of our advising consent authority and our ability to exercise oversight as a check and balance. So, you know, I'll vote for the members with the appointments tonight, but I really, you know, can't emphasize more how important it is that we just not let this slip because one day, you know, you'll find that we don't have that authority anymore simply by dint of not, not recognizing or enforcing it and allowing this to happen again and again and again. So, you know, again, I think it's important we emphasize that. I'll also note in terms of diversity, of the, of the, the six members we're doing tonight plus the one member currently on the board whose term does not expire until next year, the seven members, four of the seven members are going to come from my area, from the center square in the Hudson Park neighborhoods. So there is an issue here of kind of geographic balance, which I'm okay if everyone wants to come from my area, but, you know, you might want to have other parts of the city represented on the zoning board as well. So that's just my general comment on, on the, on the process that we've gone through. I constantly mentioned it and again, it's, you know, we might be able to look at some legislation that tries to put some more hard turn on timeframes on and deadlines for this that might override the state law that allows people to serve until someone's appointed. But again, it's, it's, you know, it has nothing to do whether you support the mayor, don't support the mayor, whatever. It's respecting our role as a legislative body, our authority to have a check and balance. And if we respect ourselves, we really need to deal with this issue in a way that restores the authority that we're supposed to have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Ballerin?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Doschett?
She recues herself on all these.
Fahy?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
And O'Brien?
Present.
Twelve in the affirmative, one present.
Resolution passes. Ms. Fahy?
I notice resolution 105.112.20R and ask for its passage and a roll call vote thereon.
Thank you, Ms. Fahy. Clerk, please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council consenting to the reappointment of Serena Joyce White Lake to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Any discussion? Seeing, Mr. Conti?
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Again, just on the process, I forgot, one of the other discussions we had was a longstanding proposal to reduce the size of the BZA from seven to five members and that, that we could kind of have that discussion as part of this process. I would prefer to have done it now when we had three vacant positions, but my understanding is that some members will be cycling off. The administration and the planning department also, I think, is on board that we really do need to reduce the size down to five members. So that's something I'm going to, you know, rejigger my ordinance and try to figure that out and hopefully we can have a planning committee meeting on that and move that proposal forward as well. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Conti. Seeing no further discussions, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes.
Ballerin?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Fahy?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Present.
President.
Twelve in the affirmative, one present.
Thank you. Resolution passes. Ms. Fahy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution one oh six, one twelve twenty R and ask for its passage and a roll call vote, please.
Clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution of the common council consenting to the reappointment of Martin Daly to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can clerk please call the roll?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. I believe Mr. Anani raised his hand.
I did. I don't have it. Did you raise your hand, Mr. Anani?
Yes, I just wanted to, just really quick, you know, Martin Daly is a constituent of mine, the tenth ward, and I just want to thank him for his service, not just on behalf of the tenth ward, but to the rest of the city. And I'm glad to see that he is going to be reappointed and thank you all for supporting his reappointment.
Thank you, Mr. Anani. Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, Martin was a sixth ward constituent before he moved over to the tenth. I think I've known him longer than Mr. Anani. I do want to say, you know, I, I, I really, I've known Martin for a long time, for a while. He is really, you know, one of the, he's, he's a native Albany. He grew up here. His family grew up here. He is really impressive. His knowledge, his enthusiasm, and, and his involvement. He served on the IDA for a bit before he came over to the the BZA. But I really can't, you know, I really need to sing his praises because I think Martin is the type of person that we really need. Young, involved, has been here, type of person we really need in the city, involved in, in boards and commissions like this. So I'm I'm happy to vote for this one. As, as it was for all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Ballerin.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Conti.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Fahy.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yes.
Frederick.
Yes.
Howie.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Igo.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kimbrough.
Yes.
Love.
Yes.
O'Brien.
President.
Twelve in the affirmative, one present.
Resolution passes. I don't know, since we're all at home, I just heard in the background that the Washington team Pittsburgh Steelers who no longer are defeated. But going on, Ms. Fahy, continue on with resolutions held.
I mean, resolution. Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution one oh seven, one twelve twenty R, ask for its passage and a roll call vote.
Thank you, Ms. Fahy. Can clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council consenting to the appointment of Richter Rice Guile to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Is there any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Ballerin.
Yes.
Conti.
Yes.
Fahy.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yes.
Frederick.
Yes.
Howie.
Yes.
Igo.
Yes.
Johnson. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Kimbrough.
Yes.
Love.
Miss Love left.
O'Brien.
President.
Eleven in the affirmative, one present.
Resolution passes. Ms. Fahy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution one oh eight, one twelve twenty R and ask for its passage and a roll call vote.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council consenting to the appointment of Paige Barnum to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Is there any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani.
Yes.
Ballerin.
Yes.
Conti.
Yes.
Fahy.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yes.
Frederick.
Yes.
Howie.
Yes.
Igo.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kimbrough.
Yes.
O'Brien.
President.
Eleven in the affirmative, one present.
Resolution passes and final resolution held. Ms. Ms. Fahy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution one oh nine, one twelve twenty R, ask for its passage and a roll call vote.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council consenting to the appointment of Jeff Quain to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani.
Yes.
Ballerin.
Yes.
Conti.
Yes.
Fahy.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick.
Yes.
Howie.
Yes.
Igo.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kimbrough.
Yes.
O'Brien.
President.
Eleven in the affirmative, one present.
Resolution passes. Mr. Kimbrough? Just unmute yourself.
Yes, that's it for the resolutions. We don't, we have any, we don't have Commissioner Deeds, right?
We do have Commissioner.
Right, so no, rest of resolutions are held. The rest of the agenda is complete. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough. Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed the following names to be Commissioner of Deeds and waive the reading of the names.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. Do we have a second? There's a second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Motion passes. In miscellaneous business? Mr. Shep?
Yes, I just want to take a moment to note that today is Pearl Harbor Day. And we had, we still have veterans around who fought in World War Two who we owe a debt of gratitude to. And we have lost many people who served in World War Two, including both my in-laws. And my father-in-law was heavily decorated for his service and did many heroic acts. I have a constituent, Mr. Allegrini, who spoke at an event at the Hibernian Hall regarding his experiences. His very harrowing experiences during World War Two. And it was a frank conversation and it's very much appreciated to think about what people have gone through to allow us to live the good life that we live. And so I want to just note that, and I think it's appropriate for us to recognize their service today, especially. And, and frankly, I am concerned for the future of our democracy when people are questioning our elections, the outcomes of our elections. And I think that we, one of the ways that we honor people who have fought for us in the wars is to take very seriously any threat to our democracy and do everything that we can to protect our democracy at this point. So I just felt the need to say that. Thank you.
Well said, Mr. She. Thank you. Seeing there's no other comments, I suggest in honor of D-Day that we end this council meeting tonight, just in silence. Ms. Igo, hold it. Ms. Igo?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
It's Pearl Harbor Day, not D-Day.
Pearl Harbor, yes. Thank you, sir. That being said.
Are we adjourned?
Ms. Kimbrough?
We, we're adjourning in silence, correct? That's your call. Okay, no further business. We'll adjourn in silence.